I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attendance this evening. We'll call we have all members present with the exception of Dan Brookins. We have minutes before us. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the October 12th meeting.
Motion to approve minutes.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mari. We have a motion by Mike, second by Mari. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda before us. And I will note, it isn't technically part of the agenda, but we will be postponing our work session. Superintendent Tradeau needs to attend to some district business, so we'll be postponing it till probably sometime in January.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mike.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mari. Any discussion or changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we have our superintendent's report and calendar.
Yeah, thanks Nicole. I just want to take a moment, a brief note. We would have gone into detail on our enrollment trend analysis with the housing report and demographics, as Nicole noted. We are going to postpone that. You do have a copy of the most updated enrollment report. From the last board meeting, our enrollment is down 10 students. Largely due to a few students that have moved and a few students who have attendance out in our system, which means they haven't attended school for a certain period of time, may or may not have notified us of a move or something of that nature. But that's the rationale for that, more than normal decrease in that trend. Then the other thing I wanted to point out, as we are in Thanksgiving week, I just wanted to extend a noted gratitude to everyone that's involved in our school district and everyone that supports what we do as public school. Last week happened to be American Education Week, where we celebrated public schools across our country. The timing of that is also fitting. There were so many outpourings of support for our teachers and our staff from our community. So I want to say thank you to those organizations that did that and acknowledge the work that we do in the public school setting. I also want to extend a note of thanks and gratitude to you as school board members for your service to our district. What you do to support the governance of what we do, the behind the scenes operations, as well as, you know, our district office staff, our administrative team, our teachers, our educational support staff, our custodial maintenance, our IT, our food service, and the list goes on and on, to everyone that supports what we do in school. And as a school district, I think the timing is appropriate to just, we have a lot to be thankful for at Fairmont Area Schools. It takes everyone involved to produce what we do and the quality experience for our students. It's a responsibility that we we all sitting at this table and everyone involved takes very, very seriously. Same information that the big financial statements have, just in a condensed,
kind of easier to read version, it's easier to talk about and kind of gain some valuable insights from. So as I'm going through it, shout at me, throw something at me if you need to stop and talk about anything. So, real informal here, but we'll kick it off here. So everything we're talking about is from fiscal year '24, so this is up through June 30th of 2024. First item of note then is the audit opinion. So when you go through a financial statement audit, that's the whole purpose of it, is to get an opinion on your financial statements. The Fairmont School District did receive a clean opinion there for fiscal year '24, technically known as an unmodified opinion. Basically, what that means is from all of our testing, we didn't find any material misstatements. We're attesting that the financial statements are fairly presented, all that good stuff. So in terms of what you want when you do an audit, this is kind of the end goal, so good job on that piece of it. Kind of the second piece that goes along with the audit is the federal spending. So anytime a district spends over $750,000 in federal funds, it triggers what's known as a single audit. That's where we test different federal programs, essentially for compliance, to make sure that the funds were spent correctly. Everything was done the way it's supposed to be. So for fiscal year '24, the district had about $2.6 million in total federal spending. We tested the child nutrition program, which accounts for about a million of that. And so from that, we do a bunch of different tests. From our samples that we took, we didn't have any findings related to that program, so no material misstatements, no areas of noncompliance or internal control issues related to our sample of testing specifically with the child nutrition program. And I guess one item to point out there is that that limit is $750,000. I think in fiscal year '26, it will go up to a million, but I don't think that kicks in for a couple of years yet.
But that won't change anything with the audit then, because if we spent 2.6, I would say we would not spend less.
Correct, yeah. And so larger districts won't see much of a change there. Some of that COVID money is kind of starting to fall off now, so everyone's kind of seeing those numbers come down, but when you're at 2.6 million, you likely won't drop below a million, barring any, you know, significant changes in student council or things like that. Slide six here just summarizes the findings for the audit. So we talked about federal awards, no findings there. We also do some Minnesota legal compliance testing, so that's things like making sure proper procedures are followed for bids and quotes. There's no conflicts of interest with the board and business, things like that. So we didn't have any findings related to that for fiscal year '24. And you'll know there's two findings for the financial statements. The first one's a carryover finding, that's just, we as the auditors are asked to prepare the financial statements. So we put together the full financials, that there's just an audit finding associated with that. And then we also proposed a few audit adjustments along the way as well, so that's what that second finding is for. But nothing outside of those two findings for fiscal year '24. Alright, jumping ahead here, a couple of slides. We'll look at the cash and investments. Purpose of this slide is just to kind of give you that 10-year snapshot of where those cash balances have been. As you can see, a little bit of an increase there from fiscal year '23. But all in all, you know, kind of comparing it across the last handful of years, you know, relatively steady, some fluctuations year to year, but all in all, give you an idea where that balance is sitting. And that would be across all funds. Looking at some of the results for the general fund then, general fund being where the vast majority of the district's operations come out of. The first slide will look at the ADM council, the students served. The reason that's important is just because that's such an important driver in terms of a lot of that state aid funding, Gen Ed, things like that. So if you ever have significant fluctuations either direction, that can have a big impact on state funding. So that's why we give you this information here. So slight decrease from fiscal year '23, but all in all, you know, relatively steady there. Alright, looking at the budget to actual results then for fiscal year '24. So that top section focuses on the revenues. So when it was all said and done, the actual revenues were about $60,000 greater than what the final budget was set at, which is relatively close in the grand scheme of things. And then on the expenditure side, you spent a little over $580,000 less than what the final budget was set at. And so if I follow that actual column all the way down towards the bottom, all in all, your overall general fund increased a little over $650,000 for fiscal year '24, bringing that ending fund balance to the $7.7 million at the bottom. We've talked about it in past years, and we'll see in a couple of slides, that amount gets broken out into some different categories.
Can you explain the 0.2 positive on the revenues and the 2.1 positive on the expenditures?
Yep, so when it says positive for the revenues, basically that means you got more than you expected to get. So compared to what you budgeted, you actually received a little bit higher than that. And then the positive on the expenditure side says, okay, we thought we were going to spend this, you actually spent a little bit less than that. So 2.1%, not real significant, you know, it is $500,000, but when you're talking about $26 million, relatively close. But when they say positive, it means you got more than you expected and you spent a little bit less than you expected. And that's all compared to your budget, sure that the board said. So we have a positive fund balance at the end of the year, just some benefits of that. You can get better bond ratings. Probably the bigger thing is if you have years with unexpected shortfalls or something comes up that you weren't ready for, just gives you a little bit of a cushion for those years. Slide 13, won't talk about too much, but these are the different categories we'll look at, so if you need a definition for it or kind of a quick snapshot of what each bucket represents, that's what that slide is for there. Probably more important, put some numbers to it. So slide 14 there, the changes in fund balances. So this will show you kind of how that whole $7.7 million is broken out. That first column shows you where everything was at fiscal year '23. The far right column is where it's all sitting at the end of fiscal year '24. Anything that has the restricted in front of it, that means there's some sort of outside organization that's, you know, limiting the use of those funds. Typically, the state or federal government. So there's money for an intended purpose, you can't use it for any purpose other than that, essentially. Anything that has a sign in front of it, assigned or committed, I should say, those are really dollars that are set aside, you know, by the board or the superintendent or the business manager for some intended purpose, but it's more of an internal restriction than it is an outside organization like the state. And then that bottom category there will show you the unassigned fund balance, and that's kind of the general, I'll say general spending dollars for the district. So those are really the dollars that are available, kind of at the discretion of the board for general operations of a entire district. And then that middle column there though, that will show you kind of how everything changed year over year. So you can see some of those assigned fund balances decreased year over year. All in all, the unassigned held relatively steady at the end of the day. Some of that's movement from those unassigned funds.
And one thing if I could just add here, Bradley, when you notice a lot of that net change in fund balance while it was positive, a lot of that came from an increase in the restricted for basic skills. So it was a increase in restricted areas, Bradley noted, where part of the reason we you see a lot of net usage of our assigned fund balances, we had to move some of those funds into our unassigned to keep that at a relatively similar percentage point from year to year, so that didn't drop to a point where by our policy that we would need to make strategic reductions. So that's where a lot of those reductions, especially the ones that end up in nice round numbers in that fund balance end of year. That's because Jessica and I moved money out of there to keep the fund, the unassigned fund balance at a similar mark to where it was a year ago. So I just wanted to point those two things out on that slide. Thank you.
Alright, the next slide, it's a lot of the same information, total fund balance slide, but it gives you kind of a year-over-year comparison, so you can see that 10-year trend. So you can see that that unassigned held relatively steady. You can see the assigned fund balances decreased a little bit there. But all in all, you can see the overall fund balance increase from fiscal year '23. So where are we in compared to where we want to be? The fund balance, page 16, looks at the district's policy for where you want that unrestricted fund balance to be. So the district has set a policy to aim to have an unrestricted fund balance of somewhere in between 12 and 35% of your general fund expenditures for any given year. So for fiscal year '24, that would have been an unrestricted fund balance of about $3.2 million. And so if we flip over to the next slide, we can see the actual results of that. The two red lines representing the top and bottom portion of that range. The blue line there, that's your unrestricted fund balance. You can see it did fall within that range for fiscal year '24. An unrestricted fund balance, that's including unassigned and then anything that was set aside in those assigned or committed fund balances as well are combined. That green line is specifically just the unassigned fund balance. So your policy technically focuses on the blue line is what it's looking at in terms of what the goal is. And I just have a few other funds here. So that was everything general fund. The community service fund, this will give you the kind of that same 10-year snapshot of fund balance that's there to provide all those different community service programs that a district operates. So and you can see there are pretty general increase there, kind of coming out of COVID, as those programs kind of picked up steam in terms of, you know, people re-entering those programs and the increased activity there. But this is essentially your fund balance that's available to continue those programs. The food service program, so again, everything food service related here. That red line, we've talked about this in the past as well. That was essentially a maximum fund balance set by the state to say, okay, we don't want districts operating food service programs at a huge profit to the district. Now, we're clearly above the red line, have been for the last several years. I've seen this at almost every district. What happened was during COVID, federal government started paying for all student meals. While the reimbursement rates there were significantly higher than what a district would normally charge for a meal. So everybody's fund balance has been growing over the last few years. Now in '24, we're back to the states covering those meals again for all students. Typically, when it's over that red line, the state will often just reach out and say, okay, what's the district's plan for spending that down? I don't think they've been real strict over that over the past couple of years. I don't know what their kind of long-term goal would be for that with all the districts, but if they were to ever reach out, they would just say, hey, what's the plan for ultimately spending this down? Whether that's, you know, new kitchen equipment, new whatever for the cafeteria, things like that, so.
But we're also limited as to what that money could be spent on as well.
Yeah, so food, I mean.
I mean, it can't be put in just for flooring or for, you know, new curtains or, you know, I mean, it's restricted on what it can be spent.
Yeah, and they would, I mean, they would have specific uses that they would want it to be spent on, but.
Yeah, and part of that healthy fund balance, if you walk through our kitchens now, all of our appliances and everything are up to date. And we've really stretched our imagination to see where we could spend that down. Just this year, they opened it up for allowable use to be lunchroom furniture, so cafeteria tables and things. That's fortunate for most districts. Unfortunate for us is we allocated some of our ESER federal relief funds for that project prior to them opening that up within the district. So our tables are all in good working order and good shape right now, but that was an expansion of the use with the last legislative session, where previously that wasn't allowed. We've researched ceilings. Ceilings haven't been allowed in kitchen spaces in past years, but refrigeration devices and ovens and all those appliances have been.
And again, this graph looks the same in almost every district I've presented at, you know, this year and for the last several years. So I would say we'll just kind of keep an eye on the state and see what they ultimately end up doing in terms of what their solution is to this, because it's.
Well, if nothing else, it's probably something that we need to discuss with the legislators as well as, you know, how else can we, you know, how else are you expecting us to use this money? Because, you know, we are restricted in how we can use it.
Yep. So we'll see what their end goal is there, what they decide to do. Alright, I got just a couple more for you here. Debt service fund, that's essentially the fund balance that's available to basically make the debt payments as they come due. And then the last one is some of the permanent funds. So this was, a lot of this has to do with the hunt farmland, and there was some of the restricted funds for that. You'll see that graph turn from blue to red in fiscal year '24. Main reason for that is because prior to fiscal year '24, that land had been held as land, it was then sold in fiscal year '24, or I think a large portion of it was. So that cash that came from that sale switched over to a restricted fund balance as opposed to non-spendable. So that investment was still there, it's just in a different form now, which is why you see the change in color there. And then the very last slide I'll show you here, this just gives you kind of your cost per ADM. So a lot of the information that's provided here for the state is for fiscal year '23, and that's just because the '24 data isn't available until after the audit. So it'll show you different categories and how it compares to the statewide average, which includes every district in the state of Minnesota. And then also similar-sized districts, and that's districts ranging from 1,000 to 1999 ADM. So you're a little over 1,700, so you're kind of in that top upper part of that tier, but keep in mind that that includes schools with 1,000 students as well. So it's not a perfect comparison, but it just kind of gives you an idea of where where the district's spending sits compared to others, so. With that, that's kind of the end of the executive summary. I guess any additional questions based on that information?
No, thank you Bradley for the thorough job and work that you do. I realize that we're paying you to do this as a district and it's required, but the summary is helpful as well as the much, the much more extensive.
That's some good reading right there.
That we have as well, and obviously, good report that our district is in good financial state, but we'll look forward to next year as well.
Thank you for updating the slides.
Got it.
Suggestion would be is to put page numbers in here, because you referred to page numbers. I did not see a page number on there.
My copy probably has it, but I print mine differently than what that one is.
Sure, but I mean, that would probably be something that could be helped.
You got it.
Helpful.
Yeah, and if there's anything else you'd like to see, certainly pass that along, and we can, I mean, this document's for you, not for me, so there's really no limit to what we can include or exclude. So if there's something you want to enter on there, just let us know.
Okay, thank you Bradley.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion to approve the 2023-2024 audit report.
I'll accept that motion.
Thank you, Mike.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mike, second by Mari. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Donations, Appendix B.
Yes, we have several very generous donations. As listed in Appendix B, I will introduce the resolution as provided for in Minnesota statutes. The Fairmont Area Schools Board of Education gratefully accept the donations or grants as identified. First, from Mayo Clinic Health System, a donation in the amount of $5,000 with designated purpose of discretionary funding for student support. Next, we have from Edmundson and Adrin LTD, $3,000 in the amount in the amount of $3,000 with a donation for activities projects. And also from Fairmont National Agency, in the amount of $15,000 for a donation for activities projects, which I believe are improvements. which I believe are improvements to some of the softball facilities.
Correct.
So with great thanks to all of our donors here, Mayo Clinic Health System, EEO, and to Fairmont National Agency. I move that we adopt this resolution accepting those grants.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Dan, a second by Julie. Any discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Jen?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye, Mike?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
The only other thing I would, I mean, with Andy's thank you that he listed, I mean, these are the other things that our district, we are very thankful and grateful for is that we have people and individuals and associations and businesses that are very generous and if it's not monetary, they're are, you know, helping our students in one way or another. And so I just want to tag on to that, that through this special season, yes, to be thankful for that.
Thank you, Julie.
Appreciate them being a part of our community in many ways.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dan. Moving on to financial reports and bills. Julie?
Yes, we have in your packet, you should have received the transfers and wires for November 7th to the November 20th. Nothing unusual in that. And then the just regular check run from this week, you can see some of the things back at, bookette is some musical, it looks like musical supplies, a lot of that. Otherwise, there really wasn't anything else that I saw that was unusual or anything. If there is any questions on that, I will direct those to those that do know the answers. But I would make a motion to approve the wire transfers for November 7th, 2024 to November 20th, 2024, and the November 26th, 2024 bills.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Julie, a second by Mari. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Old business. We have policy revisions.
So these are policies that were from the last meeting and now in appendancy C through H. You can see that they were all highlighted, all the changes and everything are in there. So with that, I will make a motion to approve the following revised policies. Policy 417, chemical use and abuse. Policy 425, staff development and mentoring. Policy 503, student attendance. Policy 507, global punishment. Policy 509, enrollment of non-resident students. And policy 512, school-sponsored student publications and activities.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Jen and a second by Julie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness goals, which formerly was the world's best workforce. New name to remember, and that's appendix A. And Kim Niss will be presenting that to us.
All right. Thank you. Yes, I am Kim Niss and I serve the district as principal of curriculum and instruction. And one of my duties is to report on the world's best workforce. It's actually still the world's best workforce for the 23-24 school year, and we're making the transition this year. So the report is always behind one year. So what I'm going to report on is from the 23-24. And again, to hold this annual public meeting. And just to make note for anyone who may be watching from home, we're just going to go over kind of the goals and the results as part of this presentation. But the, the longer report is linked on our website. And I always say the easiest way to find this report on our website is just to do a search of the world's best workforce. And it will come up. And so it'll be the 23-24. Again, we're one year behind. So again, just to kind of remind everybody about what the world's best workforce was. So the world's best workforce was actually enacted in 2013. And when it was first enacted, there was five goals that were created that school districts had to set goals around those five pillars. And then each year do a report to both the state and that state report that's linked on the website, and then at a school board meeting as well in terms of the outcomes of those goals. The five, the four, or the five goals that were original to the world's best workforce was, again, all students are ready for school. All students can read well by third grade. All racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. All students are ready for career in college and all students graduate from high school. So those were the original five pillars. Last year, the pillar regarding the third grade reading at grade level was replaced with the READ Act. So this is the first year reporting where we do not have a goal in relation to that. And again, this will be the last year that we'll be using the title world's best workforce. So in 24-25, the report will be entitled comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. So the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness, what that is, is during the 2024 legislative session, they renamed world's best workforce to the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. The new name emphasizes the dual roles for the goals set forth in district plans. So we want to support students with academic achievement within their pre-K through 12th grade experience, as well as prepare them to be active members of their community after graduation. So it's enacted this school year. And with that, with the change of the name, also, they did add an additional goal. So we're going to keep the four original that we'll be reporting on tonight. And the fifth goal that's been added is to prepare students to be lifelong learners. So those five goals for the 24-25 school year need to be reported to the state by December 15th. So tonight, what we're going to do is I'm just going to simply let you know what our goals were that we had set for last year and then what our outcomes were for those. So we'll begin with goal number one, which is all students are ready for school. So the goal that we set for all students are ready for school. And again, kind of just, I'll read the goal and I'll read the outcome. So those that are watching from home can hear and know how we did here. So the goal was that the percentage of students in pre-K ages four and five at Fairmont Elementary School who are meeting or above in the category of language literacy and communication will remain or be greater than 88% from the fall '23 to the spring '24 or through the core advantage assessment. I did put the purpose of why we set each one of these goals, and I just want to just talk about that with this one. The reason we said remain or be greater is because we had noticed a pattern that from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, this category always went down and actually went down quite a bit. So that's why our goal was really like, keep it at 88% or increase it. With this goal, we did not meet the goal. So in spring of '24, we had 65% meeting or above in the category of language literacy and communication. This was a decrease from the fall '23 percentage of 88. And again, we said to be at 88 or above, so we decreased 24%. The decrease was less than the decrease from last year. This did cause us to meet with a representative from the pre-school teachers, the pre-K teachers, and and really kind of in talking with them for this school year, we're going to go away from using the core advantage assessment as our measurement. And we're going to actually use the FAST bridge in kindergarten. So we're, there is just some questioning of the validness of that assessment. So we're going to move away from that and we're going to use FAST bridge that we give to all of our kindergartens for next year.
And Kim, just a note too, this does measure a separate cohort of kids from year to year. Correct? Like the cohort, it's not the same students in '23.
For the all school or children ready, we were using the fall to the spring. So yeah, that, for this particular one, it was the same cohort of kids. Yep. Now for like goal number two, yeah, what you're saying here, Andy, would apply. So goal number two.
So I just a question on that, just to clarify. You said that we did not meet the goal, that we were down to, how I read the, 65%, but that is not as low as what we were last year.
Right.
So we actually did better than last year.
But still decreasing.
We just decreased and did not meet the goal.
Yeah.
I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, that is correct, Julie.
Thank you.
Okay, so goal number two, which is the all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. So the goal that was set was the percentage of all students in grades four through 10 at Fairmont Area Schools will increase their overall composite score on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment and Reading from 46% in May 2023 to 53% in May 24. And again, the outcome is that we did not meet this goal. We had 40.5 proficient in 2024 as compared to 46.7 in 2023. On the report that is in the larger one that's online, I did include the, our subgroups of kids too, to see how they did. And each one of our subgroups fell from 23 to 24 as well. So that information would be in that longer report there. Goal number three, then, all students career and college ready. So on this particular one, I do want to just make note that I had a type error like in the goal. It was, it should have actually been, I fixed it here, but it should have been by May 2024, the proficiency achievement of students taking eighth grade math. Their MCA assessment will increase by 6% from 41.3 as seventh graders to 48% as eighth graders. So again, comparing the same group of kids as seventh graders, they had a 41.3 proficiency. We wanted to increase that to 48. With this particular outcome too, we did not meet this goal. As eighth graders, the percentage who were proficient from eighth, seventh grade to eighth grade went down from 41.3 to 37.3. And then the final goal, goal number four, which is all students graduate. This is, this particular goal we met. So the goal that was set was that Fairmont High School ninth grade students earning 10 or more graduation credits during the 23-24 school year will increase from 89% in June of 2023 to 91% of June in '24. So again, the previous year freshman class, 89% of that grade had 10 or more credits. We wanted to increase that to at least 91%. So this particular goal was met. We had 94.8% of our 23-24 ninth graders earned 10 or more credits. Our goal was set for a 2% increase and our actual increase was 5.8%. And again, you can kind of see the purpose there being more proactive versus setting a graduation rate where it's kind of done where we know that research has shown like our ninth graders who have, who do earn 10 or more credits are more likely to then go on and graduate. So as we follow this class through, it will be interesting to see if our graduation rate is similar to the percentage of the students having the 10 or more credit. So that's something that we'll track and follow as well. So those were the results of our four goals. Obviously, you know, we wish we could report that we met all of them, especially our, our student achievement goals. We take those, you know, very much to heart. I know all of us do. We want to see our students succeed. It does lead us to our educational improvement plan, which is kind of the final part of this. So each year, the district staff development committee, we meet in June for a retreat and then again in August, where we do really pore over the data and much deeper than just these numbers as well. And I would say that's maybe an area that we are working to improve to really be better with our data, to really truly understand what that data story is of our students so that we can make the adjustments. I will say that our letters training, that our elementary staff and some groups at the junior senior high school, that is really helping us also know how to better read our data to really pinpoint that, what our students need so that we can provide that for them. So in the educational improvement plan, we did set, I'll just move this. We did set an overall goal, again, really working on our students and their achievement and their reading. So our district goal, and this is going to be a three-year goal that we're going to set, is that we'll work to increase the total number of students reading at grade level by 10% over a three-year period from 52.5% to 62.5% as measured by the FAST bridge, a reading assessment in May of 2027. So FAST bridge is our universal screener that we use within our district. We give it three times a year. Whereas the MCA, which are, two of our goals were set upon, is the one time that it's taken or given from the state. So our goal will be using the FAST bridge. And again, the three areas that we continue to focus on, and again, I feel like we're better this year, we're moving to actually implement the Plan Do Study Act cycle more with these goals and more with the actions that we say we're going to take to increase student achievement. So we're going to continue to work with our professional learning communities, our tier one behavior instruction, and our tier one academic instruction. And tier one means that the instruction that every child gets within our mainstream classrooms and really working on, we know that that, that is the biggest factor to student achievement, the instruction that they're getting day in and day out from their, from their classrooms.
When you measure this goal, is it measuring the same students over a three-year period? Or is it
It's the over.
Every year, fifth grade, every year, fifth grade that it will increase?
Well, this is like a full district. So like, we'll look at our district total. So there will be different kids because some of our classes are larger than others, but that, that total district.
And one thing just to add is Kim noted to some of our world's best workforce goals. The, obviously the highlight is our students in ninth grade were achieving and earning high school credits at a very, very positive rate. And we certainly have work to do as, as a school district. And one of the things I continuously say in, in these meetings when we look at these goals is setting the goal is one thing, but our commitments and actions to achieving them is of the utmost importance. Whether it's our own personal goals in our lives, we can set whatever goal we want. But it's the actions behind them that, that make the impact. And I feel, you know, as we analyze the data to Kim's point, as we look at those action steps, we can't keep doing what we're doing and expect different results. And we are adjusting our course with some of the methodologies that she pointed to. And the, the aspect of looking at a goal over three years gives us time to truly analyze the impact of those, those instructional changes, those classroom things that we're looking at. Predominantly, there's a statewide mandate for letters and READ Act training at our elementary level. We only anticipate that having a positive impact on those literacy scores. So a lot goes into it. But all in all, we're, I feel like we're, we're making the right adjustments to, to move in a positive direction. So thank you, Kim, for your time, energy and effort that you put into compiling all this and putting the report together for us.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve. Where's our agenda here at? Now where did I slide it here?
The education improvement.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the 2024-25 educational improvement plan.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Julie, second by Mari. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to an MOU. You have that in your packet as appendix K.
I make a motion to approve the MOU that was negotiated between Mr. Tredo and the employee and the union.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Dan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Our school board meeting schedule? I can do that. For the month of December, our second board meeting would fall on December 24th, which is not a very good time to have a school board meeting. So we will follow tradition and only have one meeting in December. And that will, so we'll just cancel the December 24th meeting and our regularly scheduled first meeting in December will be held.
So we have the motion and second?
Yep.
I'll second your motion then.
Thank you. Any discussion?
And then this will, the first meeting will also. And then this will, the first meeting will also include our truth and taxation.
Yep, and the truth and taxation hearing will take place at 6:00 PM on that evening. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. MSBA conference, anyone want to take that?
I'll make a motion to approve the attendance of board members at the MSBA Leadership Conference.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Policy revisions, we have before you appendix L, and that is that we are proposing that append, policy 601.1 be rescinded, we don't need to have that policy. It's a Fairmont Area Schools Education Improvement Plan, it was last looked at in 2008 for, as a policy, and the reason we don't need to have it as policy is, policy 601 requires us to have an education improvement plan, and that's just updated every year. So, I make a motion to rescind policy 601.1.
I'll second.
Thank you, a motion by myself, second by Mike, sorry, maybe Mari.
Gotcha.
All those, any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Policy committee report, Jen, not really.
Not a whole lot. We went through 12 new poli- or not new policies, but 12 policies with just minor changes, some state law provisions, not needing full board approval, so.
Okay. Thank you. If you have any questions, the minutes were sent out to all board members and are available to the public, if they'd like to view those. Any questions for Jen? All right, spec board meeting, Julie?
I have nothing to report, as I did not make the meeting, as I was caught at work.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other board meetings? Okay, I make, approve a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, second by Dan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
Well, two minutes longer, it'd have been six o'clock even.